Good evening, y'all. Thanks everyone being here tonight on May 22nd. I call this special call meeting, the City Council meeting, to order. Invitation will be under Ward 1, Ms. Natasha Francis.
Good evening, everyone. That is great. Father God, thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. I just want to thank you, Lord. I ask for your guidance in this meeting. Keep us humble in all things as we work towards the betterment of our city. Help us, Lord. We need you more than ever. In this, I pray, in the mighty and the everlasting name. Amen.
Amen. Well, stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. I call on the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Francis?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley? Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Here.
Councilmember Craig?
Here.
Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Wilcox?
Here.
Councilmember Meek?
Here.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Here.
Councilmember Keel?
Here.
Councilmember Bill?
Here.
Councilmember Handy?
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Alrighty. Awards and recognition, I'll call on the Police Department. Chief Newby to come to the front.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to be swearing in four of our newest officers. And we'll be handing out one award. So I'd like to call the front. Officer Tanner Ranier. Officer Chris Little. Officer William Flood. And Detective Danielle O'Hara. If y'all would raise your right hand and take the oath.
Right. I state your name. As a citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and of the United States of America, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of my abilities and duties of police officer for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and that will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Kentucky. So help me God. I do.
Alrighty. There we go.
If you would, just greet council, please.
Yeah. Close right here.
If I could have Detective Buffer come to the front. In August of 2023, our agency started its Internet Crimes Against Children unit. Since then, Detective Buffer has led several investigations, which have resulted in 159 criminal charges against human traffickers and violent sexual predators. These investigations, these investigations have directly impacted our community and region in a positive way. The work of Detective Buffer is highly commendable and has earned him the individual commendation award.
Alrighty, we now have Chief Futral from the Fire Department up here. We have some promotions to do.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have three promotions recognized tonight. First, we have Zachary Lombard, who is being promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Zachary was hired in July of 2018. He's an Army veteran. He's here with his family, his wife Morgan, his children Lennon, Leo, Oliver, and Liv. He's received several achievements, Instructor 1, Fire Officer 1 and 2, and the Chief's Excellence Award. Next, we have Curtis Sowers, who is being promoted to the rank of captain. He's also an Army veteran, promoted to the rank of lieutenant in 2019. He's here with his wife Mindy, his children Carson, Indy, and Amelia. Has received several awards as well, Rookie of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, three Deputy Chief Merit Awards, and the Chief's Excellence Award. And we have Mark London being promoted to our highest rank for shift work, for battalion chief. He has over 15 years of service. He graduated from Christian County High School. He's advanced EMT Officer 1 and 2. He's our hazmat team lead. Several awards and recognitions throughout his career.
I say my name. As citizen of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and the United States of America, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform to the best of my duties and duty of battalion chief for the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, and that will support, protect, observe life and property of citizens of Hopkinsville, Kentucky, so help God.
The battle we set forward again.
Thank you, Chief. Alrighty. Give them just a minute, see what they're going to do. Give them just a second here. Alrighty, we'll move into Item 6, Public Comments. If anyone in the public would like to come to the podium and speak, please give your name and address so we can have that for the record.
May or not, as we roll into public comments, I actually have something I would like to say.
We'll get to you in just a minute on that, Steve.
Okay.
We'll let this public speak and then we'll let you speak. Okay? Anybody like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Peg Hayes. I live at 2815 Witty Lane, Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, esteemed colleagues and residents of Hopkinsville. Thank you for this opportunity to address you today as a citizen and as chairperson of a local development corporation. Even challenging situations can lead to positive change and stronger bonds within our community. The Local Development Corporation, or LDC, as many of you know us, was created in 1985 by the city of Hopkinsville to enhance residents' quality of life, foster economic development, and improve housing. For nearly four decades, the LDC has been involved in projects that greatly benefit our city. Here's an example of it, this building. The Legacy Hopkinsville program is but one of the many examples of our work, successfully managing nearly $8 million over 18 years without any issues, without any fiduciary problems with accuracy in generating over $22 million in private investment in the downtown Renaissance District, significantly boosting city tax revenues. However, during the Committee of the Whole meeting on May 9, 2024, there was conduct directed at Holly Bogus of Community Development Services that was egregiously unacceptable and unprofessional. I'm outraged and appalled by the disgraceful treatment and disrespect that was shown to Holly. Holly has been instrumental in driving economic and community development, in revitalizing downtown Hopkinsville, and Holly deserves our utmost respect and appreciation. That behavior poorly reflects on all of us. So I suggest that we apply the Rotary Four Way test as a guiding principle for our actions and decisions. Is it the truth? The truth is that Holly has worked her entire professional life, has dedicated herself to the betterment of our community, and deserves our respect and recognition. Is it fair to all concerned? The conduct displayed was not fair to Holly. It was not fair to the LDC. Fairness demands that we acknowledge her contributions and rectify the disrespect shown. Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Apologizing for the inappropriate behavior will help rebuild trust and foster a spirit of goodwill and collaboration. Will it be beneficial to all concerned? Addressing this issue constructively will benefit our community by reinforcing our commitment to respect, integrity, and collaboration. Therefore, I respectfully request Councilman Keel make two public apologies. One, to Holly Bogus for the disrespect she endured, and the other, to the LDC for the misrepresentation of our efforts. By addressing this issue, we can reinforce our commitment to respect and collaboration. So let's turn this situation into an opportunity for growth and unity, continuing to make Hopkinsville a community that we're all proud to be part of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Anybody else like to speak?
My name is Holly Bogus. I reside at 310 Mark Drive here in Hopkinsville. I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to those of you who have reached out to me unprompted and apologized on behalf of this body. I also want to extend my sincere appreciation to Peg Hayes and the other members of the Local Development Corporation for their dedication to this community and for their unwavering support of Community and Development Services and the work we do for them. For their willingness to publicly show their support of me, I am beyond grateful. The outpouring of support from my husband, my work family, my friends, and many community members has been both humbling and overwhelming. I thank you as well. I'm hopeful we can all move forward in a constructive and positive manner, putting our most valuable assets, which are people, first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Anyone else like to speak at the podium? Anyone else? Councilman Keel, would you like to go to the podium? Or sit at your seat, whichever way?
Sit right here, it'd be fine.
Okay?
Thank you, may or not. I did come tonight prepared to make that apology. Holly, you've been at CDS a long time. We've known each other a long time. And I know the work you've done over the years. And I truly did not mean to disrespect you, but I feel like I did. And for that, I am sorry. You've done a lot of hard work. You've done a lot of good work over the years. I've seen it with my own eyes. And I do hope you can accept that apology from me that I will say I could have been a lot more respectful and maybe should have been more inquisitive in the way I came across, and I do apologize for that. For the LDC and the LDC Board, especially Chairperson Ms. Hayes, who I've also known a very long time. I know, and I was coming tonight prepared to say this, the work that the LDC has done since the mid 1980s, I credit the LDC, and I've said that in several conversations, with saving downtown. I think there was a time we were going to lose it. And the LDC stepped in, made some good investments, saved a lot of property, and has made downtown a place that we are seeing a lot of personal investments now. And downtown's looking a lot better. So where my intent was not to come across the way I did, I failed at that, and I failed at that miserably. And I do want to apologize to everyone involved. And I will make the point to think through my words a little better and my tone a little better in the future. And I hope that's acceptable because that's, I promise you, I lost some sleep over that, especially after I went back and looked at it, and I knew I had an apology to make. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Keel. Anyone else from the public like to come to the podium? Okay? Yes, sir?
My name is Austin Moss. I live at 1701 Lover's Lane. I understand there's some budget items on the agenda for this evening. I'm speaking on behalf of the Men to Be program. I think there's a $36,000 line item request that you will consider. And I'm asking you to approve that tonight. In fact, it's 36,000. I wish it was 40. I wish it was 80. Because we make good use of the funds that we have. We're very frugal in the administration and execution of the funds that we do receive. Thank you for your support in the past. And I think that in most local bodies across the United States, state legislatures included, find some affinity for the issues of education, healthcare, job training, and agriculture. And I think you can find within the Men to Be program examples of support, activity, and investment in each one of those areas. So again, since we're aligning with the priorities of most local communities, state legislature, and national in terms of tones of issues, I'm asking your support to recognize Men to Be and approve the budget request, again, of 36,000. Give more if you'd like, but that at a minimum. I think that's the number that's there. And we'd appreciate your support and approval of that. Okay? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Natasha Francis, 1811 East 7th Street. I'm here as councilwoman, as well as a citizen, to consider the situation or the incident that happened on Thursday, the 18th, 2024, at our last Committee of the Whole meeting. I would like, for myself, I would like to make a motion to have Keel removed as chair at the Committee of the Whole when we do have our meeting because of this situation and it's, it was unconductive of a human being or a council person. That's my request. Thank you.
Councilwoman Francis, that motion can be made at the Committee of the Whole meeting, but since this is a special called meeting, we cannot consider anything that's not on the agenda.
Alright, got you.
My name is Marvin Barnes. I reside at 1603 Greenleaf Court here in Hopkinsville, Kentucky. As you can see, I'm wearing a Men to Be polo shirt. I am a mentee for Men to Be. And part of the reason why I am a mentee is because somewhere a long, long time ago, some 57 years ago, to be exact, somebody took the time to pour something into me. I would have been known back then as what you would have called a problem youth. Everything that I could think to get into, I was getting into. And nobody could seem to understand that because my main problem was that I was angry. I was angry because I wasn't with my mother. I wasn't with my father. My great aunt and my great aunt was having to raise me up. And I saw all the kids whose fathers and mothers were taking up time with them. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I just want to describe my feelings about Men to Be. Men to Be, right now, there are a lot of kids that are in situations that nobody is taking the time to understand why they're in those situations. We only see the finished product of the finished action. We see their hostility. We see their anger. We see their misbehavior or their disruptive behavior. But as a Men to Be mentee, and having gone to Bluegrass Academy on numerous of times, having gone into the public school system numerous times, having mentee young men in our sessions on Saturdays and on Mondays many of times, we get to address some of the issues that most of us never take the time to think about. And I'm here to make a plea to you. Everybody that we've ever talked to or that I've talked to in this community always has this to say about Men to Be. Men to Be is a good organization. Men to Be is a great organization. But Men to Be needs the help of our community. We need the help of other good men and women that are willing to look beyond what they see at face value in our youth and see what our youth can be for tomorrow. We are bringing about hope in a hopeless situation for a lot of these young men. A lot of them sometimes don't have food to eat. They are despair. And we bring hope. And as I preached on Sunday and as I take my seat, hope, as we all know, is confident expectation, believing that you can be more than what you are right now, believing that you can be anything that you desire to be. Because after all, this is the greatest country in the world.
Can you come up and speak, please?
Hello, I'm Emmanuel Butts. I'm a lieutenant in the Army. I'm actually not a citizen of Hopkinsville, but anytime I can, I'm down here to help with Men to Be. My heart really just goes out to a lot of these like fatherless boys who really need mentors and somebody to really take their time with them. So I just did want to represent and say something because it's a great organization. It's a real organization. It's providing some real help. And I mean, I live in Clarksville. I live pretty far away, but I'm here any chance I get because they're doing some real work in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Anyone else like to come to the podium and speak?
My name is Paulette Robinson. I live at 3711 Bahama Drive. I am... I am a resident of Hopkinsville for all my life. I am here to speak for Men to Be. For 18 years, I've worked at the Housing Authority of Hopkinsville, mentoring young children that lived in public housing. We did not have nothing but a community room and the 4-H programs, but we instilled in those children in the project that can, could not. They could not say they can't. And it was only a lot, a small amount of us, but we did not have the space, we did not have the room, we did not have the bussin' to help the children that needed so much help. And it's been a long time since I've been here and worked with the kids, but one of my most fortunate things was that one of the kids sent me a picture on Facebook that I helped, that we helped. He was in the patrol for President Obama, and he was standing there next to President Obama as his security person. And I want y'all to know that those brick walls at the Housing Authority did not contain him, because we told him he could be whatever he wanted to be, and he wanted to show me that picture of him standing there. He said, "Ms. Paulette, you always said that we can be whatever we want to be." The Men to Be Program is the same thing. We need to put our money in helping people that want to help children don't have the opportunity, and it will grow. That seed will grow, it'll come back. But we got to take time out for that. We got to take money and put money where money is needed. And I'm here to tell you that it can happen. I've seen it. It can happen. And I want to tell you right now, you need to support Men to Be with everything that you have, because they are working now in those places, in those small places, taking money from their pockets and making things work. It don't have to be that way. We can support them, and we need to support Men to Be. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Danya Brown. I stay at 505 Powell Lane. I have two boys that are in Men to Be, and I'm just here to say, like, I'm a single mom, and the fathers of my boys are not really active. If it was not for Men to Be, I really don't know especially where my oldest son is, because his father grew up in the streets, he's had to go to prison trying to do things just to provide for his family. And I've always prayed that his son and my son did not have to feel like because his mom is doing it alone, that he had to go out in the streets. If it was not for Men to Be, I would have been broken. I have a very large village, but Men to Be plays a huge part. This is one of my sons that is in Men to Be. He just joined because he just turned seven. He loves it, and I just, whatever can be done, like, they deserve so much. These boys deserve so much, because some of them don't have fathers that are active. But Men to Be, it really, really helps. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to come to the podium? Anyone else like to come to public comments? All righty, seeing none, we'll move into Item 7, Mayor's Comments. I'd like to remind everyone that Take Kids Fishing Day will be on the 25th this weekend out at Jeffers Bend. We're going to have a lot of fun out there. Charles Turner and their crew are really getting things together. Hopefully, this weather will be out of here by tomorrow, so we can start that, having a lot of fun. Water Park will be opening on the 25th. Mike and Blaine's got that under control moving forward. And we have Cops and Bobbers will be rescheduled at another date. They hadn't given me a date yet. Chief Newby's waiting on that, so we'll get that going on. June the 7th, we got the squealing on the square. Toby's got that coming up. We need to be ready for that. We'll have a lot of fun out here on the square. I'd like to thank every candidate that put their name on the line, each and every one of you. Takes a lot of guts to step out there, get out there and knock the doors, meet people, talk to people that you don't know. Thank you all. Y'all, ladies and gentlemen, are commended for that, and thank you for putting your name out there. I will ask the community to get out and vote. 6% is low. I will ask each and every person in this community to register to vote and to get out and vote. If you don't vote, you don't have the right to complain. I'll just be that blunt about it. You don't have the right to complain if you don't get out and vote and express who you want in office to represent you. But on that, thank you all, the council members and everyone that ran. Thank you very much. All righty, moving right on. Reports from officers and committees, we'll be calling on Ms. Melissa Clayton to come on down and give us a report. She's got a big one.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to bring you guys the April financial report. We'll start with the interfund transfers. We had one interfund transfer in the month of April for $2,000 to sponsorship of the Boulevard Bash. That brings our total interfund transfers for the year to $55,184, leaving us the balance in the interfund of $44,816 at the end of April. Our payroll tax, payroll tax revenue for the month of April was 17 million through 10 months is 17,688,206, giving us equivalent payroll for the year of $907,087 for, $907,087 for 87, which is a 6% increase in equivalent payroll over last year. For property taxes through 10 months, we have collected $5,656,528. Insurance premium tax through April was $5,859,390. That's an increase in equivalent premiums for the year of 4.1%. And our business licenses through April 30th were at $3,364,220, which is running above budget and above where we were at this time last year. Which brings us to our general fund balance. General fund started the year with $256,251 in encumbrances. We've collected so far year-to-date $46,224,107. Our actual expenses year-to-date are $42,526,814, giving us a positive revenue over expenses of $3,953,544. We currently had encumbrances of $57,140, leaving our balance at $3,896,404. This takes us to our fund balance comparison between this time last year through April last year. Our revenue over expenses was at $4,844,000, and you can see we're running behind where we were this time last year, by $1.2 million. Let's talk about the fund balance in our municipal road aid account. Municipal road aid started the year with $353,291 in encumbrances. We've collected $648,583 in revenue. We have expenses of $961,813, giving us positive revenue over expenses of $40,061, and we had $785 in encumbrances at the end of April. Now, let's talk about capital. Capital started the year with $409,976 in encumbrances. We've collected in the capital fund $3,88,982, and we have spent $3,48,551. So our revenue over expenses for capital is at $450,407. Let's take a look at how each department is doing. For the departmental expenses, through 10 months, we should be at 83.3%. So admins at 78.2, the tax department was at 73.9, information technology's at 88.5, and legislative was at 87.9. The police department was running at 81.4, ECC is at 92.7. The fire department was at 84.3, EMS was at 103.4. We all know that's due to the unscheduled overtime. And then fire prevention is right at 53%. In the public works area, public works admins at 78.5, city maintenance is at 77.7, Fort Camerón contracts is at 70%, service centers at 73.6, parks and rec was at 76.3, sportsplex is at 77.3, and the aquatic center is at 94.3%. So overall, for the general fund year-to-date, we're running 84.7%, so a little bit over budget. Municipal road aid is at 92.7%, and the capital fund is at 69.5%. The cash fund balance at June 30th was at $15,158,964, plus our year-to-date receipts, less our year-to-date expenses, gives our cash balance on April 30th at $18,856,257, minus our encumbrances, which gives us our available cash at $18,799,117. So we take our available cash and we subtract out our reserve balances. Our unassigned cash fund balance at April 30th is at $16,714,446, which is at 39.9% of our adjusted operating budget. And when we compare that to where we were this time last year, you can see we're running behind where we were last year. Last year, we were at 41.8% of unassigned, and this year, we're at 39.9. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about April's financials.
Any questions for Ms. Melissa? All right. Seeing none, let's move. Thank you, ma'am. I'll move into Item 9, Approval Amendments for May 7, 2024 Regular Meeting. On that?
So moved.
Second.
I got Amy and Don. Thank you. Any discussion? All righty. All of them favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? On Item 10, Ordinance 13-2024 FY 2324 Operational Budget Amendment, First Reading.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, now therefore beordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, a summary, Section 1 of Ordinance 092024 adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2024 is amended as follows. General Fund: $51,925,124. Municipal Road Aid Fund: $683,722. Prior Year: $2,292,052. Total Revenues: $54,900,898. Expenses: General Fund: $52,217,176. Municipal Road Aid Fund: $683,722. Total Expenses: $50,900,898. Surplus zero. Section 2, the full text of this ordinance is on file in the Office of the Understand City Clerk in the City of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8 o'clock a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday.
All righty, need a motion?
Motion. Second.
Don? Thank you. Any discussion there? Seeing none, we'll call the clerk, call the robe.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
All righty. Item B, Ordinance 14-2024 FY 2324 Capital Budget Amendment, First Reading.
Amending the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual capital equipment and property replacement budget for fiscal year July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore beordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that Section 1 of Ordinance 052024 amending the fiscal year 2023/2024 capital equipment and property replacement budget is amended as follows. Transfer from General Fund: $2,5,585. Transfer from General Fund wins additional insurance premium: $244,675. Transfer from General Fund Police Department: $173,909. Insurance proceeds: $89,045. Prior Revenue Capital Reserve: $122,216. Prior Revenue Capital Equipment Reserve: $1,686,606. Total Capital Revenue: $4,322,36. Expenses: Administration: $70,000. Information Technology: $70,000. Police: $1,102,560. Fire: $1,492,476. Fire Prevention: $155,000. City Maintenance: $542,000. Parks and Recreation: $140,000. Sportsplex: $75,000. Water Park: $125,000. Buildings and Properties: $550,000. Total Capital Expenses: $4,322,36. Surplus Deficit Zero. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
So moved.
Got Amy and Don. All righty, any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, would you please call the robe?
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Right. Item C, Ordinance 15-2024 Fire Station 5 Bonding, First Reading.
In ordinance of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of its general obligation bond, Series 2024A, in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $6 million, which principal amount may be increased up to $600,000 or decreased by any amount to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of, one, renovations to convert an existing office building into a new training center and 24-hour fire station, and, two, an apparatus bay with three truck bays and support spaces for the new fire station. Approving the form of the bonds authorizing the designated officers of the city to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of a notice with the state local debt officer, providing for the payments of insecurity for the bonds, establishing a bond payment fund for the bonds, affirming the maintenance of the city existing sinking fund, authorizing the acceptance of the bid of the purchaser for the bonds, and peeling inconsistent ordinances. Summary, now therefore beordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. The ordinance authorizes the issuance of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky of a series of general obligation bonds designated as the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky General Obligation Bond, Series 2024A, for the purposes of, one, financing all or a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of, a, renovations to convert an existing office building into a new training center and 24-hour fire station for the Hopkinsville Fire Department, and, b, an apparatus bay with truck bays and support spaces for the new fire station; two, paying capitalized interest on the bonds, if desirable; three, paying the cost of the credit enhancement for the bonds, if any; and, four, paying the cost of issuance of the bonds. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of the bonds, the security for the bonds, the application of the proceeds of the bonds, the creation of a bond payment fund, and the continuation of the city's previously established sinking fund. The ordinance also contains certain covenants made by the city in connection with the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on August 1st of each year, commencing on August 1, 2025, through and including August 1, 2024. The bonds pledge the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the city in provisions which have been made for the collection of a tax to pay the principal and interest due on the bonds, subject to certain credits as provided in Section 8 of the ordinance. The sale of the bonds is contingent upon the satisfaction of the requirements and conditions of the city relating to the project. As required by KRS Section 83A.060, the following Section 8 of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. Section 8, General Obligation. The bonds shall be full general obligations of the city, and the full credit and taxing power of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment of the bonds and interest thereon during the period of the bonds are outstanding. There shall be, be and there hereby is levied annually on all taxable property in the city, in addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate, a direct tax in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of an interest on the bonds as when due. It being hereby found and determined that the current tax rates of the city are within all applicable limitations. The tax shall be in as hereby ordered to be computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate to be collected by the same officers in the same manner, and at the same time the tax- at the same time the taxes for general purposes for each of the years are certified, extended and collected. The tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof provided. However, that and each year, the extent that other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds and are appropriated for such purpose, the amount of such direct tax upon all taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriated.
Alrighty. Need a motion?
Motion.
Dawn?
Second.
Amy? Any discussion? Seeing none, call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Alrighty. Item D, Ordinance 16-2024 FY 2425 Operational Budget on first reading.
Adopting the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary now therefore be ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1. A summary, the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget of the City of Hopkinsville is hereby adopted as follows. Revenue, general fund, $51,194,831. Municipal Road Aid Fund, $776,690. Prior year, $148,619. Total revenues, $52,120,140. Expenses, general fund, $51,194,831. Municipal Road Aid Fund, $925,309. Total expenses, $52,120,140. Surplus, zero. Section 2 adopts the classification and compensation plan pursuant to Chapter 30 of the Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances. Section 3 sets authorization to enter into contracts or agreements within budgeted allocations. The full text of this ordinance is on file in the Office of the undersigned City Clerk in the City of Hopkinsville at 715 South Virginia Street, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, where it is available for public inspection between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Alrighty. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Chuck and Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Alrighty. Ordinance 17-2024 FY 2425 Capital Budget, first reading.
Adopting the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky annual capital equipment and property replacement budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section 1. The fiscal year 2024-2025 capital equipment and property replacement budget of the City of Hopkinsville is hereby adopted as follows. Revenues, transfer from general fund, $1,987,916. Transfer from general fund wins additional insurance premium, $258,296. Transfer from general fund, Fort Campbell, Kentucky, GSA contract, $100,000. Transfer from general fund, police department, $40,956. Total capital revenues, $2,287,168. Expenses, information technology, $252,000. Police department, $373,000. Fire department, $450,000. City maintenance, $450,000. Fort Campbell Contracts, $100,000. Service Center, $25,000. Parks and Recreation, $125,000. Buildings and properties, $550,000. Transfer to MRA, $60,000. Total capital expenses, $2,385,909. Surplus deficit, $1,259. Section 2, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into any contracts or agreements necessary to acquire capital equipment or services within the allocations listed in this ordinance. Section 3, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held for any reason unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 4, any and all existing ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect July 1, 2024 after its passage and publication according to law.
Amy? Jason Vail, any discussion? Alrighty, call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
That passes on first reading.
Righty. Item 11, Municipal Orders. You ready there? Municipal Order 15-2024, Council Chambers ADA Doors.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes transferring $12,055 from the interfund transfer account to the building maintenance and repair account to install new doors in the council chamber that are compliant with the American Disability Act.
So moved.
Amy, Dawn, any discussion? Alrighty, clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
That passes.
Alrighty. Item B, Municipal Order 16-2024 FY 2425 Community Development Block Grant Budget.
Pursuant to Municipal Order 1691, the City of Hopkinsville authorizes the mayor, his designate to expend the anticipated Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds available for fiscal year 2024-2025 of $232,606 as follows. CDBG program administration costs, $46,521.20. A, general grant management oversight and coordination. B, planning and policy planning management capacity building activities. Two, Walnut Street Center Boys and Girls Club public service funding, $34,890.90. Three, rehabilitation programs, Hopkinsville Home Improvement Program, $50,066. Rehabilitation Program Administration, $8,150.40. Four, Section 108 loan debt service, $92,977.50. Total CDBG dollars, $232,606. This is to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into and execute contracts for the management and administration of the Community Development Block Grant Budget. This is to authorize the mayor or his designate to act on behalf of the city and city council to submit 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan, all understandings and assurances, and to provide such additional information as may be required. Further, that the mayor, his designate, as approved under KRS 83A and 24 CFR 91.105, shall have full authority to act as the full official representative of the grantee insofar as community and development block grant funds are concerned.
Right. We need a motion?
Motion.
Dawn?
Second.
Chuck, any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy? Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
That passes.
Righty. Municipal Order 17-2024 Inner City Res Fund Reprogramming.
Hopkinsville City Council hereby authorizes the following reprogramming of funds within inner-city residential enterprise zone budget. Amount, $31,139.54 from educational job training programs to 7th Street Gateway Insurance. $18,860.46 from inner-city park improvements to 7th Street Gateway Insurance. $105,000 from housing assistance programs to demolition. $31,188.83 economic infrastructure to the Odd Fellas Building. $28,811.17 from housing assistance programs to the Odd Fella Building. $36,000 from housing assistance programs to Hopkinsville Real Estate Development Proposal. Total, $251,000.
Need a motion? I've got Terry, he needs a second.
Second.
Jason Vail, alright, any discussion? Seeing none, call the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamburger?
Yes.
Councilmember Keel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Handy?
Yes.
Councilmember Francis?
Aye.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
That passes as well.
Alrighty, we're moving into item 12, Executive Order. Executive Order 09-2024, Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise Board Appointment.
Effective immediately, Wendell Lynch shall be appointed to the Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise Board. This term shall expire April 30, 2028. We do need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Needs a second.
Amy and Dawn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, alrighty. Moving into item 13, Councilman Comments. If anyone would like to speak, go on council. Chuck Crabtree.
Two things I'd like to mention. The first, I'd like to thank all of the poll workers and the County Court Clerk's office. They really did a good job. I know sometimes that's thankless, but appreciate what they did. The second thing that's noteworthy, Troy sent us an action plan, and basically, this is a two-to-five-year strategic plan of all the departments in the city. In looking at that, a lot of hard work went into it, a lot of thought, a lot of planning, and I think that helps the city set the long-term direction. I know those will change a little bit, but you got a plan and you got a direction, and I just wanted to say I appreciate everybody's work. Plan your work, work your plan, and thank you all for what you do.
Chuck, anyone else? Ms. Jamie?
I have some comments. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let everybody know, let the community know, first of all, Saturday, weather permitting, right, Chief? 11 to 1, Joe Mumford Park, come out. We're gonna cook out with the cops. There'll be the Camaro and Bolo and all sorts of good stuff, so everybody come on out to that. So I just want to let people know about that. And also, I just would like to say thank you to the people in Hopkinsville who voted for me and put their faith and trust in me to be their council member, and the year's not done, and I'm still at work. So here we are. And I would also like to just say happy birthday to my mama, because I know she's watching. So happy birthday, 80th birthday, mama. I love you. And I just want a clarification, Mr. City Attorney. Motion, I have a, I have a motion. It doesn't cost any bu, any money, but I need to wait for...
For another, for a regular scheduled meeting.
Alright, gotcha. Alright. Thanks.
Any other council member like to speak? Alrighty, I'll go back to Board One, Ms. Natasha, for adjournment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm closing with Ephesians 4:2. Be completely humble and gentle. Be patient, bearing with one another in love. With this in mind, I adjourn.
Alright, a motion to adjourn, second?
Motion, second.
We adjourn, thank you. Thank you.